Everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Calling the meeting to order, I'd like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Ford.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Teeter.
Here.
Councilmember Madera.
Here.
Councilmember Frank.
Present.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Douglas.
Present.
Councilmember Hughesman.
Present.
Councilmember Elliott.
Present.
Councilmember Hordiola.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you for the record. Everyone's here this evening. I'd like to ask everybody to stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if the staff will please pass around the microphone, allow the audience the opportunity to introduce themselves.
My name's Luke Whittemeyer.
Lance Fitzgerald.
Phil Noble.
Doug Heinmann, Information Technology.
Kathy Blakeman, Human Resources.
Armando Hordiola, Finance.
Chris Kramer, Community Development.
Ryan Seastream, Colorado Oil and Gas Association.
Susan Noble.
Carly Seller.
Eric Goodmanson.
John Hauser.
Laura Moody, Economic Development.
Michelle Mogulson, Economic Development.
All right, thank you all for being here tonight. First item on our agenda is the Citizen Communication portion of our meeting. Per council policy, Citizen Communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address the council on business and affairs of the city. The city council is not able to hear any comments on land use matters that are before or may come before council. Please reserve those comments for the appropriate public hearing. Please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you. I have three folks who have signed up on the request to speak at Citizen Communication list, and I'll start off at the top of the list. When I call your name, please come up, state your name and address for the record, as I said, and then you have three minutes to communicate with the council. We'll start with Susan Noble.
Good evening, Mayor and council members.
Good evening.
I'm Susan Noble. My address is 10642 Olathe Street. On behalf of all citizens in the North Range concerned about numerous oil and gas drilling proposals, tonight we respectfully request, in the strongest possible terms, that you as our representatives on this Commerce City Council direct the staff to not negotiate on any oil and gas industry matters until after the November 2018 election and a decision by the Colorado Supreme Court in the Martinez case for the following reasons. Commerce City is a high-risk area. Our groundwater table is high and susceptible to contamination from spills and leaks. Clean water is a necessity and cannot be further jeopardized. Commerce City is an air quality monitoring site and has failed to meet air quality standards. Commerce City borders the Superfund Site of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge where buried contamination may migrate off post. Earthquakes have originated in Commerce City and near our neighborhoods. Our current regulations are inadequate to meet the mega pads that are planned for this area. The North Range is densely populated and growing, and even one mistake could be catastrophic under your watch. The Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission has not approved a single drilling permit in Commerce City. As a reminder of what you supported in the Martinez case, here is the conclusion of the amicus brief, and I quote, "Like the other state agencies and local governments throughout Colorado, the primary duty of the COGCC is to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, not to balance it against the desires of for-profit corporations. For the reasons stated above, the AMICI parties respectfully assert that the court should affirm the ruling," unquote, "of the appeals court. Because North Range concerned citizens believe that heavy industrial activity is incompatible with residential uses anywhere, we also ask that you direct staff tonight to file an amicus brief in support of the lawsuit against Suncor Refinery and ExxonMobil filed by Boulder County and San Miguel County to help pay the costs of impacts on Commerce City and on all of its residents. Thank you, Mayor and council members."
Thank you. Next, Eric Goodmanson.
My husband has graciously given me his time that he signed up for.
Well, here's the thing. Because of how many people are in and out and what's going on, I need to keep everybody limited to their three minutes. So if he would like to come up and take his three minutes, I'm okay with that. Each of you will have three minutes, but I can't just have 15 people come in and give up their time and have someone talk for half an hour. So I gotta be careful. So if you both stand there, you both can have your three minutes.
Eric Goodmanson, thank you, council members and mayor, for your time. I live at 11030 River Oaks Lane in Henderson, Colorado. One of our primary concerns about the expansion of these super pads in our neighborhood is the estimated 60,000 truck trips. 2,000 trips per well times 25 wells just for the antelope pad alone. It took me well over 45 minutes just to drive from Bridge Street in Brighton to get here in our current traffic. Now, we're gonna add all these trucks to that current traffic. I would like to see some plan for the oil and gas companies coming in here and creating these pads and creating all this traffic to alleviate. Are they gonna build more roads? Or are they gonna pay to use E470 rather than use our streets? I live right off of Peoria, and Peoria is disintegrating right now. It's not even winter yet. When winter comes, that road's gonna fall apart, and that's right next to where they're talking about putting one of these super pads. They're gonna drive the trucks over that road, and that road cannot handle the traffic it has right now. Peoria's a two-lane road. If another road is built off Peoria, as the antelope pad is talking about, or lighted 104th and Peoria might alleviate the traffic problem, I don't understand how people are gonna come and go from my own neighborhood. There's only two exits from my housing development now. 104th has four lanes. It wasn't built to handle the mono-truck traffic that oil and gas is talking about pushing through. Highway 2 is now four lanes. It was just widened, and it's still unable to handle the truck traffic just to get here for this meeting tonight. The railroad tracks. The train's gonna run regardless. We've dealt with the train companies and complained about the noise, and the train company's answer is, "We were here first." Whenever people complain about them blocking 104th, blocking 112th, or blocking 120th. So sometimes we have to drive a mile out of our way to get out of our neighborhood. Now you're gonna add all these trucks from extraction and these other oil companies for these super pads to that already congested area. Health. The COGC stated in 2013 during the setback rules, and they're not following the setback rules that currently exist. Safety. Human error, truck accidents, such as the accident next to the Pooter River that leaked fracking fluid into the Pooter River. Not self-monitoring.
Thank you. All right, next we have Lisa Goodmanson.
My name's Lisa Goodmanson. I live at 11030 River Oaks Lane in Henderson. First off, I would like to just say I am not against fracking, but I am against fracking literally in my backyard. And I'm gonna read from the city's response to the antelope pad. Literally, they're saying Commerce City has grave concerns over this location due to its proximity to future multifamily housing that is expected to be constructed within 170 feet of the proposed location. That doesn't even follow the current setback rule that's already in place. The proposed production facility and wells will be within 500 feet of more than 100 homes that are already there. Commerce City also said that it's generally opposed to locating 24 wells and 48 tanks and other related equipment immediately adjacent to the residential area. Health and safety, Commerce City's greatest concern about the proposed antelope location is the health and safety risk it might pose to future Commerce City residents. The risk of injury and death to members of the public from wildfires and explosions rises in direct relation to the distance of the oil and gas facilities to homes. And according to what you guys replied back to the COGCC, there have been at least a dozen fires and explosions in the eight months since the Firestone tragedy, and this was done months ago, this response was. That's a rate of 1.5 fires and explosions per month. You guys also responded, Pure Street, which will serve as a residential arterial street within Commerce City, the risk of proposed 48 takes poses a risk to air quality, but the tanker truck traffic may also pose a safety risk to Commerce City residents. Like I said, I am not anti-fracking. You can frac all day long, wherever you want to, except for we're in a residential area. And I am frustrated that we have to keep coming here every Monday. We don't get paid to be here. I come here because of my family and because I own a home, and I can't just sell my house because if I do try to sell my house, then I have to report to the potential purchaser that there's gonna be fracking in our neighborhood, which is a huge turnoff to most people. I have to come here and speak on my behalf because it feels like my city council isn't speaking on my behalf for me. That happened at the study session. It was more probe, oil and gas was being projected towards us. That's not all of us that are, that you're not speaking on behalf of all of us. So I'm just asking for us to put on the brakes a little bit, take a minute, breathe, figure out what they're gonna do, because you can't just go willy-nilly putting tanks and fracking wherever you want to.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our Citizen Communication portion of our meeting. Yes, sir? All right, I'll give you your three minutes, Guillermo. Come on up.
Guillermo Serna, 14122 East 102nd Place, Commerce City, Colorado. Just a reminder, about 15, 20 years ago, bond issue or mill levy, 300 million for infrastructure. New growth, new direction, new homes. Nobody mentioned fracking, even though it was there. Did we know about this? This community, and I'm talking Commerce City as a whole, has given its best with the arsenal. It was a good thing to do. What did we get? Mounds up there that are gonna be around for 1,000 years. Reminder, we need to look at how we want to grow. Separation of space is not that big of a deal. With the technology that they have now, it could be three miles away and they can still get to where they wanna go. Why do you need so many? We need some type of an agreement. When the arsenal came in, school districts heard it because it was this and it was that. People were scared, and they're scared now because they've spent a lot of money into it, and we're still not getting it. Conical. We had tremors and everything right around this area. Finally, they left. Companies that have come in have shown this community how to be good neighbors. Suncor. Whether the people remember or not, they helped with the Boys and Girls Club, and they're still helping. They set the example for some of our American companies that didn't do it before with this area and could've done it. Take a look at what we're doing. We are putting up with a lot of traffic. I just counted about almost 45 cars before I could get into 104th to come here. It's not their fault. The roads are there, but we got to look at how these companies have got to understand that, yes, they mentioned 200,000 jobs or whatever, but they're not all here. They bring in their labor, and then they buy into it. You've seen it. And if they don't, they rent and bus people here.
Thanks, Guillermo.
Think about it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Now, since I let Guillermo speak, is there anyone else in the audience who was here for Citizen Communication that did not get the chance to sign up? All right, then we're gonna move on in the meeting. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are 10 items listed under the Consent Agenda. I'm gonna ask the council if anyone has a desire to remove an item off of the Consent Agenda for further discussion. Seeing nobody, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Hughesman?
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda as submitted.
Thank you. Mr. Madera?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda of the city attorney. Please read the titles.
The minutes of March 19, 2018, the minutes of June 4, 2018, the minutes of May 7, 2018, the minutes of April 2, 2018, and the minutes of June 18, 2018. Ordinance 2167, an ordinance amending the 2018 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Colorado Department of Transportation grant in the amount of $4,500 for DUI enforcement efforts and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Ordinance 2177, an ordinance amending the 2018 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by appropriating portions of the unencumbered fund balances of the General Fund, Fleet Fund, Information Technology Fund, and Police Donation Fund, transferring to designated funds portions of the unencumbered fund balances in the General Fund, Water Acquisition Fund, and CIPP Fund, and reaffirming certain prior appropriations for a total amount of $4,419,222, and authorizing the expenditure thereof. Ordinance 2178, an ordinance amending Section 3-1200 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code relative to the authorization of jury fees. Resolution 2018-70, resolution approving economic development incentives in favor of LPC Reunion LLC for the establishment and operation of a full-service restaurant in the City of Commerce City. Resolution 2018-72, resolution approving professional services agreement retaining Keller Vorback LLP as special counsel and authorizing litigation for claims against pharmaceutical companies and distributors.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion and a second, and the titles have all been read. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, the Consent Agenda has been approved unanimously by the city council this evening. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Resolution 2018-68, I will remind the city council to use the public hearing portion to ask questions, but wait until the public hearing is closed to express opinions or indicate how you will vote. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing and invite the staff forward to make their presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Appreciate your time tonight. Robin Kearns with the Planning Division, Community Development Department, here to present case MD-10718, the Canal Avenue Metro District. This district represents approximately 90 acres. On your screen highlighted by, in the blue, and hatched, as you'll see, there is a, that is a drainage ditch managed by Freiko running north-south through roughly the middle. And this property is owned I-2 in terms of general Commerce City zoning, which would allow for industrial and commercial development. The purpose of metro district plans are to finance the construction of public improvements for infrastructure related to the use and benefit of those within the taxpayers within that district. The service plan authorizes the district to issue debt and provide the public infrastructure improvements with that debt. And that debt is repaid, is paid by the district through the fees and tax revenues associated with a mill levy. The district debt is not an obligation of the city and does not impact the city's budget. Fundamentally, it allows a developer to be reimbursed while avoiding upfront recovery costs on those within the development and essentially spreading out the infrastructure cost over time. The creation of a district requires city council action, and with the approval of the district, and it, from city council, is the first part of the formation process. With council's approval, the petitioners would then move on to file with the district court of the state and seek an election in November to officially form this district. The petitioners are the landowners, but they also include Burlington Ditch Reservoir and Land Company, which has consented to this application and is the owner of the ditch that I referred to earlier. Council is reviewing the service plan and is, it proposed IGA that goes along with it, to find that it will be executed after the district forms, and then negotiations then commence with the metro district between them and the city. The service plan and the IGA largely conform to the city's templates, and the property is within the city boundary. The proposed metro district limit in this case is $30 million with a 35-mill levy, and the plan does reference a 50-mill cap. The applicant's financial plan has analyzed this metro district financial goals and found it to be sufficient in terms of property tax and other revenues to discharge the indebtedness that it would create. The plan's proposal is essentially to create an office park, Canal Avenue Industrial Park, sorry, not office park, industrial park, which would provide approximately 730,000 square feet of development. You'd have six 20,000 units of smaller office flex-type space. Then you'd have six 50,000 units providing more small manufacturing, midsize warehouse, and distribution. And then there'd be 235,000 square-foot buildings that would allow for larger manufacturing, warehousing, and distribution operations. A graph shows kind of an overall picture of the metro district's financial picture, which is assulating $14.185 million for public improvements with a total debt limit of $30 million, and then some extraneous fees, organizing operation, and a first-year operating and maintenance fee. Metro district criteria is reviewed per state statute CRS, as you can see these long numbers. And there's two points to them. First, does the service plan include all required contents? And second, has four points, that there is sufficient in existing and projected need for organized service in the area to be served by the proposed special district, that this existing service in the area to be served by the proposal special district is inadequate for present and projected needs, that the proposed special district is capable of providing economical and sufficient service to the area within its proposed boundaries, and finally, the area to be included in this proposed special district has or will have the financial ability to discharge the proposed indebtedness on a reasonable basis. The Development Review Team found that the service plan includes all the items required by the state statute and does find that the overall goal, city council goal, number one of developing a balanced and vibrant economy to improve socioeconomic status by providing a balanced mix of uses is met. Looking at what this project proposes, the 90 acres, approximately 735,000 square feet of industrial facilities, balanced to our currently, there's only 243,132 square feet of industrial flex built within the city with a very low vacancy rate, whereas we have over 7.3 million square feet of heavier industrial warehouse space built within the city. So this project does provide more of a, that industrial flex, basically midsize, lower-size industrial that is at a lack in our city currently. And therefore, the Development Review Team is recommending that city council approve proposed service plan and IGA associated with this case, MD-10718, the Canal Avenue Metro District. This is the end of my slides. I am, staff is here to try to answer questions as well as the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Before we get into questions for the staff from the council, I want to give Mr. Hughesman an opportunity to make a disclosure.
Thank you. In the interest of full disclosure, I want to inform the city council that I have prior personal experience with the applicant's attorneys. Until recently, the same firm represented a metro district board on which I serve, and I was involved in a decision to obtain new counsel for that board. I believe there is no conflict of interest in that I can hear this case fairly and make an impartial decision.
Thank you. Does anyone on this council have any concerns with Mr. Hughesman being able to take action tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on. Does anybody have, anybody on the council have any questions or comments for the staff at this time? Councilwoman Frank?
So is this part of the future land use, like the flex that's going in here? Is that part of what the future land use is, or is that the current land use?
That's a great question. It is currently zoned I-2. The future land use plan has this as office, so I guess a little less intense.
And then are there any, does the developer have interested parties to purchase some of these buildings now?
That is a great question. Hopefully, they can speak to that. I presume by our low rates of availability that there would be interest, but I cannot verify that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Madera?
Will this metro district include any residential property?
It will not.
Thank you.
All right. Next, I will call on the applicant to come forward and add anything to the process. Next, I will call on the applicant to come forward and add anything to the process. And then we'll allow council to have questions of the applicant. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Vanderwall with Sederin Vanderwall, the law firm that has assistant, assisted the applicant in submitting the service plan proposal. I appreciate the time of all of you as well as staff. And I want to introduce Luke Widdemire and Lance Fitzgerald, who are here on behalf of Canal Ave LLC, as well as one of the attorneys who's also been working with us, Cam Richards from Sederin Vanderwall as well. Just a brief introduction, and then I can try to answer questions or allow the developer to, to present as well. We worked hard with City Council, or rather, the city staff in using the city's recently adopted model service plan and intergovernmental agreement, and worked hard to make sure that we were able to conform the proposed project to the city's service plan model. And I believe we've done so. The project is, as you, you've seen, for 90 acres of commercial development, and it is projected to also conform to the city's development requirements and land use requirements as they are unfolded over the course of the, the initial project and as it builds out. I don't know, Luke, do you want to maybe provide a little description of the project? I think that might be helpful. Right now, it is all undeveloped property.
So what we are looking at is a 90-acre parcel that we originally had purchased in 2003, had looked at doing, our background has been in self-storage and that type of thing. That was originally what we had intended.
Can you get a little bit closer to the microphone so everybody can hear, please?
Sorry. So we had purchased this ground in 2003 with the intent of looking at a place for doing a self-storage yard. That is, both through time and through changes of what we do, is no longer what we're looking at currently. The plan that we have before you, or that this is all based on, is probably a 15-year, 15 to 20-year build-out across the whole part of it. The largest component and biggest problem that we are having with the ground right now is the ditch going through it from north to south, both between the way that it meanders through the ground, as well as the various setbacks. That's a big part of the height, of the desire to get the district formed, is that it would help with either relocating, burying the ditch, or, or piping it along the perimeter of the property in order to access, give us better access to the ground.
Thank you. All right. Does anyone on council have any questions for the applicant? Councilman Madera.
Sorry, that was still on from last time.
All right. Mr. Douglas.
Yes, thank you for coming down on this hearing. My question is, there's townhomes just to the east of the property. How is that going to impact the people living in the, in that community as far as the building height, or what you're planning to build, structure-wise? How's that going to impact their view currently as far as out to the west?
I mean, it would certainly change their view. Right now, it's an open field that's being farmed. It is a view that is looking at I-76. I think there would be, I mean, I think everything that we would be, building would be subject to the city requirements relative to height, building heights and the like, but it would change and become more of an industrial, it's been industrial, I-2 industrial zoning since we purchased the ground. We actually, at the time of the purchase, did a deal with that home builder who purchased that, a trade with us at the time, and sold that piece of the ground to them. But it would certainly change.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Hughesman.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at the capital plan that was done up, I see that your estimated cost to put in the infrastructure required to turn this into an industrial park is projected at $11.8 million, with a 20% contingency bringing you up to the $14,185,800 that is referenced on the chart for how much bond you initially want to take. But the documentation provided by DA Davidson says that the initial par in 2021 would be $18.17 million, significantly higher than the $14 million. That would of course include some interest on that original $14,663,000 for the issuance of those bonds, and a little bit more remaining to be deposited into the district project fund. So if you only need $18 million, I am trying to figure out why it is that you need a $30 million bond limit on this service plan. Further reading into the DA Davidson documentation, it says you guys want to reset the bonds in 2031 with $28.835 million in bonds at 5%. Another $400,000 almost would be used to issue those bonds. $17,830,000 would be used to refund the 2021 bonds that are originally taken, and $1.3 million would go to reserve fund. And the remaining $10.664 million is projected to be deposited to the district's project fund to reimburse the developer for eligible expenses. If you've previously identified that your expenses are going to be $14 million, why do you need to refinance and pull another $10 million out? Why do we need to reset the clock on the property owners that are going to go out there and invest in this community and open up businesses to another 30 years of debt? And why do they need to pay another $400,000 for that inconvenience of paying another 30 years of debt whenever they could have just stuck with the original 2021 bonds and been a third of the way towards paying them off?
I will start by saying we also had, and we have the financial consultant who is expected to be here this evening, and I understand she's like five minutes away. We were projected to be here at, in front of you at 6:45, so I know she is doing her best. So I will do my best to answer your question, but I would like to have the opportunity, if she does arrive timely, to maybe step in and assist with that. The, the financial plan is a plan at best, and it is presented to show the feasibility of being able to finance the improvements and have them pay themselves off over time within the limits of what both the market and what the financial restrictions allow for, all within both the city's 50-mill levy cap, and then the targeted mill levy of a 35-mill levy cap, or rather, 35-mill levy. The, the refundings that are projected in the financial plan are intended to allow to take advantage of the market at the time for what the improvements will cost, and then allow for savings at future times when the district would be in a position to get better financial rates, better market conditions for savings that would be passed on to the homeowners, or rather, the, the property owners.
So I, I think many of us have probably purchased a home or refinanced a home. We know whenever we refinance, we don't have to do a cash-out refinance. We can just refinance the balance that is out there, and we can just continue to pay on that balance at a lower interest rate. So that doesn't quite answer the question as to why we need to pull another $10 million in bonds in order to do that refinance at a better interest rate once the property values have gone up.
I am not in a position at this point to explain that because I am not of the, I don't have the financial expertise behind that. And I can get back to you on that one in just a few minutes, I guess, unless you wanted to add anything to that.
I don't think I can necessarily explain as well as she would be able to either. I would say that a lot of that is based also on the idea of the phasing of the project. Any of those funds that we are using are only, those aren't necessarily just development costs that are part of any of the private development. Those are all only going toward, those funds are only used and able to be used for the public infrastructure. So that would be the case as to whether or not it's first built in the beginning or additional things that come in as we get further down the project line. And so it was designed with the idea of it being more of a buffer or the ability to have that there.
So if that's the case, then why couldn't that service plan be set up for the initial debt to be taken out in 2021? And in 13 years, should you need to take more money, come back and ask for an amend to the service plan, they would grant the additional debt, as opposed to just stating out there that these people who invest in our community and open up businesses and open up the, and build the land that we desperately need, according to our sturdy staff, we're saddling them, we're setting them up for 30 more years of debt after they already think that they've paid for it for a third of the time.
Well, again, this is a plan of finance. It is not necessarily the actual financing that is used by the district at the time, but it is a plan to reflect how these improvements can be financed within reasonable limitations. There are a number of ways in which prospective purchasers and occupants are made aware of what the district's limitations are and what it has expectations as far as its financing. The service plan is one, it's a public document, it is submitted with the division of local government, it is, it is available for inspection by anybody. The district, once it is formed, there is an order and decree that gets recorded against the property. Anybody who is performing due diligence in the acquisition of property in the district is put on notice of that order and decree, which identifies some of the, the key financial limitations as well as the district itself. There is documenta, or provisions in the, any real estate contract that is dictated by Colorado Real Estate Commission that also identifies when there is a special district that sits on property that somebody is looking to acquire or purchase. There is something called a transparency notice that the district is obligated by statute to file with the division of local government. It is also posted with the Special District Association that includes a variety of special district provisions, financial provisions, debt that's issued, positions on the board when meetings are, are held, et cetera. There is another disclosure document that gets recorded against the property after the district is formed that is separate from any of the others, that also provides some key provisions of the district, including financial provisions. And then lastly, the developer is likely going to be distributing and sharing financial information at the time of closing on sales so that nobody is caught short in not understanding and knowing what the district is all about, including all of the disclosure that goes with what the district's financial expectations, financial limitations, and financial authorization include. So I, I totally get the, the interest in trying to protect the, the homeowners, the property owners, the business owners from what a special district means relative to financial protections. And it is the topic of, of the industry, if you will. And as I've mentioned, you've, there's so many provisions that have been put in place already, and more that are just voluntary as well. And then there's the marketplace that also dictates what can and can't be done from a feasibility perspective.
All right. Mr. Douglas.
Thank you. Sorry, thank you.
If I may, I apologize. I did want to introduce Brooke Hutchins with DA Davidson. She is the author of the financial plan and probably can share in much better detail the, the rationale behind the, the series of bond issues and the refundings that Mr. Hughesman was asking about.
All right. We'll get back to Mr. Hughesman to ask additional questions of your finance person here in a second. Mr. Douglas, you have the floor.
Okay. Thank you. So based on your analysis here, or as far as laid out for these different series of bonds, pretty much hedging out your futures as viable funding options, is that right? As far as bonding? So in case, depends on which way your project goes, you can implement this because it's in place or disregard it? Is that true?
This serves to provide a depiction of what the district is projecting to do. When the bonds are proposed to be issued, we will be looking at what the market conditions actually offer, what makes sense, whether, who's going to be the investor, what the interest rate is going to be. But this is a financial plan that, that identifies what is feasible and capable within reasonable market conditions of what we can project.
Okay. Now that your finance, your financial professionals here would like to hear from her.
Hi. Good evening. I'm, I'm sorry for being late. I was coming from another meeting. My name is Brooke Hutchins. I work with DA Davidson, and we prepared the models that accompany the service plan that you're reviewing tonight. I think your question is why two series of bonds, and also what, what happens when we actually go to market? So I think, we think about service plans as something that are done upfront because we need to form the district in order for it to exist. When we actually, and what we do here is show one of maybe thousands of potential ways to bond against the district based on the development and the timing that we have upfront. As the district moves forward, there are lots of options when it comes to financing. You can go issue third bonds to third parties. If you wait until later in the project cycle, when more of the vertical development is complete, that tends to come along with less credit risk and so lower, lower interest rates, which is why we show both an initial upfront funding to fund infrastructure and then a refunding later on at a lower interest rate. Another option that districts have pursued is loans, bank loans, which, you know, have different types of parameters. So I think this service plan shows one way, one feasible way that you could bond against the district. When we actually get into having a district and discussing the goals, there are lots of options that could potentially be available.
Mr. Hughesman.
Thank you. So I agree with the idea of refinancing at a later date, and the nice lady standing next to you helped our district refinance our loans through, even your company was a big assistance on that, and we cut our interest rate almost in half through that. But we didn't take out additional debt when we did it, and we didn't extend the term out another 30 years when we did it. And so my question remains, why do we need to pull another $10 million on these bonds whenever it gets refinanced in 2031?
Sure. So I wouldn't necessarily say need. First of all, they'd only do that if there were dollars left over to be reimbursed for infrastructure they had put in the ground. So if the first bond issuance fully paid them for all of the public infrastructure, then the refunding would just be for rate savings. I think one of the things about a service plan model is that we have to anticipate things that are hard to know with pinpoint accuracy today, looking forward to 2031. So this model does, what is, what we're asking it to do is to tell us what is the most money we could fund for infrastructure if the need was there? Now, if it's not there, then, you know, there, there wouldn't be a need to do a refunding for more new money, but guessing what budgets will be and what construction inflation will be today is, you know, not a hard science. So we try to show you what the total capacity could be, but of course, if there's nothing to reimburse the developer for, then you wouldn't have any new money in the second refunding.
Anyone else? Mr. Davis?
Thank you for coming tonight. My question is regarding accessing the aggressive of the property. I see it from my map, it's 104th. Is that the only entrance? I know that Peoria Street circles around to the east side of there, and as Mr. Goodman and one of our residents said, that, that street is in pretty poor shape now. Are there any plans to access it from that road as well, or is it just one entrance?
That is an ongoing discussion that we will be having with the city. We were in with the pre-op. The property to the north of us that shows what is actually labeled as Canal Avenue is a triangle piece. That is currently under plans as being a regional detention pond. In the pre-op meeting, was suggested to us that there would not be access going out that way. When we had purchased the property back in 2003, we had come to the city discussing the fact that we would need for fire and emergency services a secondary access point. The plan or hope, desire for that detention pond was on the books, but it was still very preliminary, and so they'd said, we have a letter from the city planner at the time and the engineer acknowledging our need for a secondary access point, but acknowledging also that the plan for the city would have that.
Excuse me. Folks in their back are having a hard time hearing?
Sorry.
Thank you.
So we have a, a letter from the city acknowledging our need and our requirement for. for the secondary access point for fire and emergency services. Because that detention pond was going in there, there was some question as to the exact location that that would be, and that if the pond were needed to be adjusted, they would be looking to our property to provide the additional acreage to do that. That is not an area that we have discussed yet with the city. From the pre-op meeting and the discussions with the fire marshal, their suggestion was that we would need, they would work with us on a variance, so we would have Joliet as one, and then working with CDOT for an emergency access off of 104th.
Okay.
On to the front of the property, on the south portion, but it would be one of the two of those.
Thank you, sir.
All right, any other questions from council for the applicant? Mr. Teeter?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Well, we've got to get the hearing closed first, so let me proceed with the hearing. All right, thank you, folks. Now I'd like to ask if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward and testify during this public hearing. No one? All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the findings and the recommendations of the Planning Commission on Case MD-107-18.
Thank you. Councilwoman Frank?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on Case MD.
Mayor Ford?
Yes, sir.
It's my understanding this did not go to the Planning Commission?
Then why is that in here?
That is a very good question.
All right.
But, you could...
Yeah, I mean, that's what the council has, is that it went to Planning Commission. So if this did not go to Planning Commission, then that shouldn't be in there, and then I'm open for a motion on the resolution. Mr. Teeter?
Yes, I will re- amend that and make a motion to approve the...
Resolution?
Resolution on Case MD-107-18.
Nope, it would be Resolution 2018-68.
Okay, I got you now.
So you're good with that?
I'm good with that.
All right. Councilwoman Frank?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. For the city attorney, please read the title.
Resolution 2018-68, Resolution approving the Canal Avenue Metropolitan District Service Plan and the Intergovernmental Agreement between the City of Commerce City and the Canal Avenue Metropolitan District in Case MD-10718.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, all opposed? All right, motion carries. Mr. Huesman, I'm sorry, but I got that in just a little late. If, if there is discussion from the council on, on something like that, you need to light up your light and let me know you want to have discussion. So, please, make sure you do that. All right, next we have ordinances on first reading, Ordinance 2180. Does anyone on council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Saying none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on this matter? Saying none. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Teeter?
Make a motion to approve Ordinance 2180 on first reading, council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Huesman?
Second, the motion to approve Ordinance 2180 on the motion with council seated.
All right, thank you. A motion and a second to approve Ordinance 2180, is there any discussion? Saying none. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance 2180, an ordinance amending the 2018 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by recognizing regional air quality council grant funds in the amount not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars for the EVSE Electric Vehicle Supply Equipment Project and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. Everybody, everybody's in? Yours wasn't working?
Yeah.
Okay, you want to redo that? All right, go ahead and revote. Yep? Try that one. All right. Motion's carried. Is, Ordinance 2180 is approved unanimously by the city council this evening. Next is Ordinance 2181. Is there anyone on city council that has any questions regarding this ordinance? Mr. Douglas? All right, is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on this matter? Saying none? I'm open for a motion. Mr. Douglas?
Make a motion to approve Ordinance 2180, council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Madera?
Just want to clarify, that was for 2181?
2181. Mr. Madera?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 2181 on first reading, council is seated. Is there any discussion? Saying none? I'll ask for a roll call vote.
And I'll just read the ordinance title. Ordinance, while you're voting, Ordinance 2181, an ordinance creating Section 12-2011 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code regarding entrance upon closed public grounds and repealing Ordinance 2160.
All right. Ordinance 2181 is approved unanimously by the city council this evening on first reading. That takes us to administrative council business. Mr. McBroom, you want to discuss filling former council member Diaz's seats on the boards and committees on which he served?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. With the resignation of Paulo Diaz, there are boarding commission seats that he occupied that are now vacant. Laura, if you'll switch the screen over. Laura, will you switch the screen over to the laptop? So one of the attachments that was included in the packet was this spreadsheet, which is just those board and commission seats that Mr. Diaz occupied, either as a primary member or as an alternate. It would be important to appoint a new council member to fill all of these seats, with the exception of one. Right in the middle of the spreadsheet, the NLC Community and Economic Development Committee. That is a voluntary position that Mr. Diaz occupied. It is not necessary for city council to appoint a replacement, you certainly can, but each city does not have a council member sitting on that particular committee. It was Mr. Diaz's voluntary decision to serve on that national committee. There are a number of NLC committees that are available for council members to serve on if they choose. In fact, Mr. Douglas serves on one. So I would focus your attention on the other appointments. It is not necessary to fill Mr. Diaz's seat on that NLC committee. The other boards and committees would be very helpful to have a new council member filling the seats that Mr. Diaz vacated.
Thank you. So, we'll start off on the 27J Education Foundation. So, Mr. Diaz, Councilman Diaz is no longer with us, and we have a new council member, Mr. Davis. So, all the other council members serve on several different boards and commissions, but I'm not going to limit this just to you being able to take these slots. So, what will happen is I want to have anybody with interest to serve on the 27J Education Foundation, please raise your hand, let me know that you have an interest to serve on That includes you, Mr. Davis.
All right.
Well, you are now?
Yes.
All right. So we'll put Mr. Davis on the 27J Education Foundation. Then we have the National Organization to Ensure a Sound Controlled Environment, or NOISE. And is there any desire from any of the council members, including Mr. Davis, to serve on the NOISE Committee? I served on that for many years, and it's, it's a good organization. And the, the one thing about NOISE, the, this particular organization, now they're only meeting at the NLC conventions. So you don't have to, it's not like it's a regular monthly meeting, it's something that you'll only meet with them at the National Eagle Cities Conference. So, right now I have interest from Mr. Davis, anybody else have interest? Mr. Huesman? All right. I have one slot to fill, right? Yep, there's, there's only one slot to fill. So between Mr. Huesman and Mr. Davis, do you guys want to decide or have the council decide for you which one of you will be serving on?
I'd be honored to give that to Mr. Huesman.
All right, so, Mr. Davis gives that up, Mr. Huesman accepts it.
Actually, I, I think we need a coin toss.
No? That's done. Now we come on to the School District 27J Facility Fee Foundation, which was also Mr. Diaz. They meet monthly on the third Friday at two o'clock. Does anyone on the council have any interest in filling that seat on the Facility Fee Foundation for 27J? All right. Councilwoman Frank does. Does anybody else have an interest in serving on the 27J Facility Fee Foundation? Saying no one else, then we'll let Councilwoman Frank take the Facility Fee Foundation. We have the Friends of the Front Range Wildlife Refuge. I served on that for many years as well, it's a great organization. Matter of fact, any of you that went Saturday night to the Moonlight Gala, that was put on by the Friends of the Front Range. So that's the kind of programs that they do, and it's all about programming the refuge. So is there any interest to fill that one seat that's available on the Friends of the Front Range Wildlife Refuge?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am?
I have a question for you.
Sure.
So on that, we show that Councilman Huesman is member number two, and I'm an alternate one. So would it be beneficial that either one of us move into that member one position?
Yep, and that's absolutely the case. So, since you're alternate one, Huesman's alternate two, or member two, and Diaz was member one, I would give you the preferences being the alternate, if you would like to move into a membership position. Is that what you'd like to do? So, the way, the way it should work is, Huesman being member two should move to member one, Elliot being alternate one should move to member two. Is your, are you okay with that?
Well, Mayor Ford.
Yes, sir?
Mayor Ford, I, I don't think there's necessarily priority over member one or member two.
Okay. I didn't know how this is laid out, is member one, member two?
Just two council members are appointed, so I think if Councilwoman Elliot has a desire, you could very easily just put her in number one.
And one alternate, all right, and then one alternate, so you want to be a member? Move up from alternate to member?
So, neither one of, well, I haven't been to a meeting, even though I've been an alternate for quite some time, I haven't been to a meeting in probably over a year. So, I mean, I would welcome that, but I wanted to extend the invitation to Ben as well, or, I mean, I don't know how we should work that out, if I should just plan to go? I don't want to take that away from you.
Well, both members should be attending.
Well, that's, that's what I, that's what I thought. If we're not going to have an alternate, so then let me ask you this, if we're looking at one, one or both of us moving into member one and two, then that would be an alternate seat, so that necessarily wouldn't be a member that has to attend these meetings on a regular basis.
Correct. So if you go to being a member, and Huesman's a member, you guys are the regular members, and then I would ask if anybody wants that alternate position, so as long as you're comfortable being a member?
That's fine, I will accept that.
So we'll move Councilwoman Elliot to be a member, along with Mr. Huesman. Is there anyone who has an interest to be an alternate for the Friends of the Wildlife Refuge? All right, Mr. Davis? All right, so if everybody's okay with that, we'll put Mr. Davis as the new alternate. And then if Huesman or Elliot cannot attend a meeting, then they can refer to you, and you can attend on their behalf.
Mayor Ford?
Yes, sir.
On the next item, the Regional Air Quality Council, I'd also ask council to skip that appointment as well. It's actually, those board positions are appointed by the governor, so technically, Mr. Diaz still is in that seat.
Oh, it's that position.
So we'll reach out to Mr. Diaz and see if he wishes to continue serving. If not, we'll bring that one back to you. And again, no need to appoint a replacement for the NLC committee.
All right, great. Next we have the Water Commission. That is another one of my committees that I serve on. It's the mayor and one member, Mr. Diaz was that member. Is there an interest from this council to serve as a member of the Water Commission? Mr. Douglas?
Sure, I take it. If there's nobody else.
I did that on purpose. All right, so if everybody's okay, Mr. Doug, Mr. Douglas could be the second member to the Water Commission. And yes, I did skip the NLC Community Economic Development, intentionally, because that's an NLC position, and then, of course, the Regional Air Quality Council. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, on that NLC, applications are open right now, if any council member wants to apply for various boards. So you submit your letter of intent, and then you'll, if you're accepted, you'll know this fall at our fall meeting in LA.
All right, thank you. All right, we have Adams County Economic Development. Looks like right now, Mr. Teeter is the member, Mr. Diaz was the alternate. Is there one, anyone on the council that would like to serve on that committee as an alternate? Adams County Economic Development. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Davis is willing to take that one, seeing no other interest, we'll let him fill that seat. CML Policy Committee, of course, Mr. Douglas is the member, and Diaz was an alternate. Is anybody interested in being the alternate to the CML Policy Committee? Saying no one? There's no one that wants to, to serve on that? We'll give it a little time and check back. Right now, we do have Mr. Douglas performing that duty, and we need to try to fill that alternate space at some time. E470 Highway Authority, currently, Mr. Douglas is the active member, Mr. Diaz was the alternate. They meet on the second and fourth Thursday at nine AM. Is there anyone who has an interest in serving as an alternate on the E470 Highway Authority? Mr. Davis? Anybody else? No one else? All right, then we'll let Mr. Davis be the alternate on the E470 Highway Authority. And I think that takes us through all of them. Brian, did you take good notes there? We're still missing an alternate for CML Policy Committee, but otherwise, all of them have been assigned. Yes? Turn your microphone on.
What about NADA?
NADA?
Mm-hmm. Because you had said you were going to back off that.
Yeah, I'm no longer on NADA. Rick is the current member of NADA, so there could be an alternate to NADA.
I would like to ask to be the alternate for that.
Okay. Anyone else have an interest in being the alternate for the NADA meetings? And NADA meets as well on Thursday mornings, so as long as your schedule allows for Thursday mornings. Brian? NADA alternate, since I'm, I'm no longer on NADA? Rick's the new member. The only interest that I'm seeing is from Councilwoman Frank to be the alternate for the NADA meetings.
Terrific.
If you had put her on there.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions concerning boards and commissions before I move on?
Mayor Ford?
Yes, sir.
Maybe allow us to walk back through the list, if Laura or Dylan, if you wouldn't mind, walking back through the list to make sure we heard it all correctly, and then a motion to appoint, as we've reviewed with you, would be most helpful.
Thank you.
So I have 27J Education Foundation, Davis, NOISE, Huesman, 27J Facilities Foundation, Frank, Friends of the Front Range Wildlife Refuge, we have two members, Huesman and Elliot, one alternate, Davis. Regional Air Quality Control, that's appointed by the governor. We're going to check to see if Mr. Diaz wants to be on that. NLC, applications are open this time, but no one has, has done that yet. Water Commission, I have Douglas. Water Commission, I have Douglas. At CoED, I have Davis as alternate. CML Policy, no alternate appointed as of today. E-470 Highway, I have Davis as alternate. And NADA, Frank as the alternate, Teeter as the regular member.
Okay. Is there a motion? Mr. Huesman?
Motion to approve the appointment as written by the city clerk.
Thank you.
As read, excuse me, as read by the city clerk.
Councilwoman Frank?
Second the motion.
Thank you. A motion of second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. All right. Does anybody have any administrative council business, city council? Mr. Huesman?
Thanks, sir. Back whenever Bison Ridge first opened up, I tried to connect a nonprofit organization in the community with the facility with the intention that they would be able to use the parking lot, but the facility in general, as a place to hold an event that they would have to further the cause of their organization. And ultimately, the city was going to charge fees for that organization in order to operate there. And I think that that's doing a disservice to the nonprofits that we have within this community. We are continually going to events where we spend money, and we purchase, and we sponsor tables, and we outlay funds in order to support these nonprofits. And here we have an opportunity where we could be supporting nonprofit organizations in the community by allowing them use of the facility. The facility is a community facility that was built for all the residents and the businesses and the nonprofits to be able to use. So I would like to see us change the ordinance so that, once again, listed 501(c)(3) organizations are allowed to use the community room, the parking lot, whatever, at our recreation facilities free of charge in order to be able to further their cause and continue to support the community.
Mr. Huesman, are you asking staff to come back with what they can put together for that? Or are you asking for us to make, are you making that a motion for consideration? Brian?
What would be most useful is provide us that direction. Let us bring back a policy or an ordinance. I think it's just a policy as opposed to an ordinance. We'll verify how we have previously regulated use of our facilities. Bring back some language to make sure we got your intent correct.
Then, Mr. Huesman, what I do is recommend that you make a motion to direct staff in that manner, and then I'll take it to the council.
Great, so I make a motion to direct staff to engage in that manner, and would request that that motion be heard as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Wadiola?
I'll second that motion.
All right, I have a motion of second to direct staff to look into offering some opportunities for nonprofits at the rec center pertaining to the discussion Mr. Huesman just had. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Staff will get back to us as to what kind of program they can put together. Is there any other administrative council business? Mr. Wadiola?
I just wanted to give a huge shout out to the art students at Adams City High School that decorated our snowplows for the homecoming parade this year. If you have a chance to look at the snowplows, they did an amazing job on the shovel part of the snowplow. So Mr. Rogers, the art teacher, has done a great thing with those kids and that program. But it was awesome seeing the snowplows decorated, and they actually paint on them, so.
Yeah, they do look very nice. Thank you for that update. Any other administrative council business come forth to the city council? Seeing none, we'll go into reports. Mr. McBroom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did distribute the city manager report towards the end of last week. Happy to answer any questions if council members have any. Other than that, nothing additional to add.
Thank you. All right, city attorney, Robert?
The only report is that this evening, council approved the resolution regarding potential litigation against opioid manufacturers and distributors. It's been in the news lately. So we're going to retain that counsel and commence an investigation in the city to determine the appropriate course of action, and then move forward with seeking an appropriate recovery on behalf of the city and the community. Other than that, I have no further report.
Thank you. And for my report, of course, Rotary every week. And then I did go on a tour with Mr. McBroom and the EPA Administrator from Washington, DC, out to the Wildlife Refuge. And we toured and looked at all the caps and covers. We toured the repository, as well as the Bald Eagle Repository. And then I wanted to mention homecoming. Several of the council members attended the Homecoming Parade on Saturday for School District 14. So thank you for being out there for that. And then we had the Harvest Moon Dinner, as I mentioned earlier. There were several council members that attended the Harvest Moon Dinner out at the Wildlife Refuge. So thank you for that. Does anybody have anything that I'd like to add to my report? Now is the time to do so. Mr. Teeter?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. A lot of us council members did attend the Wings Over the Rockies project the other day. It was basically, it was to congratulate the Adams County staff and Adams County Commissioners, the Front Range Airport, for being one of the 10 sites selected for Spaceport. And Adams County was selected for one of those slots. I did also attend the groundbreaking for the new animal shelter, which will be built next year. And that's going to be in 124th and the Adams County Park area. And I did also attend and work the Fire Department spaghetti dinner, which went very well again this year.
Thank you. Mr. Wadiola?
One thing, I attended the Cultural Council this Tuesday, and we will be sponsoring the Art in the Derby, October 6th, Art, Food, Music, and Crafts, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Magnolia Street Art Space. So we're just trying to get the word out. Cultural Council will be one of the sponsors.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you. I, you know, I serve on the NLC Transportation Infrastructure. And last Wednesday and Thursday, went out to Washington, DC, and met with seven different Congress members. One from Virginia, three from Ohio, of course, our representative at Perlmutter, DC Representative, Missouri, and Texas. And went over tax reform 2.0, water resources, that's a big thing, FAA reauthorization in small cell wireless infrastructure, which if they decide to do a federal mandate, that would take our ability away to have a franchise with the current cell providers in our area right now, and that would affect our 811 service. Not only that, I did advocate for our transportation projects, the three that are in our 2018 booklet. I appreciate the information from Michelle Halsted. I was the only one who had, could leave information behind based in our city and pawn that for talking with, let's see, not Ohio, yes, Ohio. It was Congressman Rob Gibbs from Ohio. They're looking at doing, oh, he's trying to propose earmarks again because of all this different needs that the cities are asking for. Once they'll try to slip them through the bill, they want to bring back earmarks. And a big talk, of course, of train blockage. And several cities have the same issue with train blocking. And I talked to folks down in New Mexico. They have 3,000 rigs that come through the border of Mexico every day. And they're looking at $125 million flyover for the disruption. And as far as train blockage, we talked about quiet zones and how our city was constructed and how those were turned on. And being, serving on that infrastructure and transportation, I have brought to the table the things that we have done in our city to advocate and get support from the federal side. And so I've been educating those other cities as well on the do's and don'ts. So it's a, let's say, it's a great structure to be on, infrastructure and transportation, because it's needed. And again, I really appreciate the booklet because it looks like Commerce City has been doing their homework.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Councilwoman Frank?
So I have two items. Just a reminder that Boards and Commissions interviews are scheduled for October 6th. So if any residents have an interest in serving on Boards and Commissions, to go ahead and apply online. And then the other thing on our youth commission, we are having the first Commerce City Youth Commission Conference on October 24th. So if students have an interest in attending, registration is now available online at the Boards and Commissions portion of the website underneath the youth commission. So I just wanted to let everybody know.
Thank you. All right, that takes us through to the end of our regular meeting. We do have requests for an executive session. I want to ask staff to make their presentation before entering into, or agreeing to enter into, an executive session.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. We have a brief public update, both for council and the community's benefit, before suggesting that city council adjourn to an executive session. As we've mentioned at times in the past, as part of our public updates, there's a two-level regulatory process here in the state. The state retains most of the regulatory authority for oil and gas within the state of Colorado. In fact, the state has preempted most local jurisdiction over oil and gas activities, although we do have some authority to regulate oil and gas activities. The common applications that the city is involving itself with at the state level are spacing applications, Form 2 and Form 2A applications. We have asked, and operators, most of the operators in our community have voluntarily agreed to hold on their applications through the state while we work with them to find the best possible locations and the best possible list of conditions to benefit the Commerce City community. As I mentioned, the city's authority, all cities, all local units of government in the state have a limited authority to regulate oil and gas within the state. City council had previously provided direction to staff to work within our limited authority, to work with operators to develop conditions that would best benefit our community. The city also has a permit process. Any regulator who wishes to conduct activity within the city needs several permits from the state, but they also need a permit from the city of Commerce City. We provided an update last week. Last week, there hadn't been any applications submitted. We still have not received an application. The city has not received an application under the city's permit requirements. Any state permit applications on which the city has been negotiating conditions, the public will have an opportunity to comment, both through the city and also directly through the state of Colorado. Go ahead and go to the next slide, Chris. There has been a considerable amount of activity at the staff level since we received that initial direction from the city council back in May. Staff continues to meet with prospective operators within the city regarding, again, both proposed locations and conditions that can be tied up into a set of best management practices for operations within Commerce City. We've also been busy meeting with other experts and other agencies, other government agencies, other cities and counties that have more experience interacting with oil and gas operators have been a great source of help for us. We've also been receiving community input, both through city council meetings, including the study session last week, as well as an informal community survey that was distributed at our community outreaches and is also available on the city's website. We're also reviewing our current regulations, matching them up against best practices in other communities, and also measuring them against what's permitted by the state of Colorado. As I mentioned on the previous slide, city staff at council's direction has been busy meeting with prospective operators in the city. It's been very focused discussion, based on trying to essentially negotiate the best sets of conditions for operations within our community, both in terms of locations and best management practices for each site. Below, on the bottom part of the slide here, is the list of subject areas on which we've been meeting. And I think we've been making fairly good progress. Regardless, the results of those discussions will ultimately be available for public review before the city submits those comments to the state. So the, so the purpose tonight, there is no action being taken by the city council tonight except to provide further direction to city staff as part of the executive session tonight. Again, there are no city applications that have been submitted that are pending. Any state applications for activity within our community have been voluntarily put on hold by operators within our community. There are a number of ways for the public to provide input into this process. The city, again, is reviewing state applications as part of the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission permitting process. The public will have an opportunity to comment on the city's comments before we submit them to the state. Citizens in the state can also provide feedback directly to the COGCC. The COGCC allows written comments. They also have public hearings of their own where folks can comment. And again, through the city's own permitting process, it is our intent to have open houses to allow the community to comment before the city issues any permits as well. So those are three pretty key, pretty important ways for the public to provide input in addition to attending city council meetings, like folks have done tonight, and providing feedback to you directly. As I mentioned previously, the purpose of the executive session tonight is very limited. City council previously provided direction to city staff. This is an opportunity to check in with city council, give you an opportunity to provide us additional direction. We are negotiating on the city's behalf, and it's an opportunity for the city council to provide us additional direction. The executive session only includes the city council and city staff. There's been some misperception in the community based on the wording on tonight's agenda that oil and gas companies are part of the executive session. They are not. Outside parties are never a part of executive sessions. So this executive session tonight will consist of the city council, city staff, and the city's outside retained legal counsel. So that is, that's the purpose of tonight's executive session, and that's who will be present during the executive session. Happy to answer any questions before you adjourn to executive session. We would recommend that you adjourn to executive session to give us an opportunity to update on the status of those negotiations and provide the opportunity for council to give us additional direction.
Thank you. Thank you. Does the council have any additional questions at this time of the staff? Seeing none, Councilwoman Frank? All right, Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, parentheses, 4B and E, for the purpose of determining position and strategy in instructing negotiation regarding the city's response to state oil and gas permit applications and potential conditions for the future operator agreements with the Extraction LLC and receiving legal advice related thereto.
Thank you. Mr. Madera?
Second. I have a motion and a second to go into this executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, looks like we have eight ayes, one nay. Motion is carried, and we are adjourned to our executive session. Executive session is planned on our agenda for approximately a half an hour, and then we'll come back out and close out our meeting. Thank you all for being here.
All right, how's that? Better? Mr. Hughesman.
Thank you. I move to direct staff to continue discussions with oil and gas operators to identify potential standards, conditions, and best management practices to seek to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public and to present such standards, conditions, and practices for public review and comment as soon as practicable.
Councilwoman Frank.
I second.
A motion and a second to direct the staff to continue working with and negotiating with operators for the betterment of the safety of our community. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion is carried. Now, if there be no further business to come before this City Council of Commerce City this evening, we are adjourned. Thank you.